All set. Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. Good evening all. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam and I'll be chairing tonight's public hearing and council meeting. On behalf of council, I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's public hearing. Public hearing into the bylaws that will be read to you, introduced to you in a moment by the city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw and then the floor will be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak. I stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But there are some rules that council has asked me to enforce and that we do strictly enforce at these meetings for one important reason. We want everyone to feel comfortable to get up to the podium and say what's on their mind. We want you all to feel comfortable and in order to do that, we find that these rules actually help facilitate that. First of all, it's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who might have a different point of view than your own. So we ask that everybody please restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw. Be as brief and concise as possible. We ask speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak can do so. Speakers are permitted to actually speak more than once if you've still got some good stuff, as long as it's new or additional information. We just ask you to step to the back of the line and let everyone that hasn't spoken speak first. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. We ask you to please refrain from clapping, from booing, from cheering, from jeering, any of the presentations made tonight. Tonight, this is actually pink shirt week and we do ask all of that because we know how intimidating it can be to be at the microphone. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive of anyone, or which becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Please note that if you have some written materials that you want to make part of the permanent record of tonight's meeting, you must submit that written material to the clerk's desk prior to the adjournment of the related item on the agenda. Please note that council can't receive any further information from the public about any of these applications after we've adjourned those items on the public hearing agenda. Once the public hearing is over, we cannot even talk about it. So immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council can give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda as well as items on the council agenda. However, if during the public hearing, council requests further information or requests deferral of an item, consideration of that item can be deferred pending receipt of requested information or to another meeting. I'll now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, your worship. First item this evening is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the property at 3411 Victoria Drive from RS2 one-family suburban residential to RS7 small village, single-family residential. This is bylaw number 4647.
Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Chris Jarvie, acting supervisor of planning. Item one is a rezoning application at 3411 Victoria Drive. Property is located on the north side of Victoria Drive between Coast Meridian Road and Toronto Street to the east. The zoning on the property is currently RS2 suburban residential. Zoning to the west and east immediately is also RS2 suburban residential. To the north, it's RS7 small village, single-family. And to the south is the City of Port Coquitlam. The land use designation on the site is small village, single-family. And the proposal is to rezone the site to RS7 small village, single-family in order to facilitate a subdivision into two lots. As part of the subdivision application, it includes a road dedication along Victoria Drive as well as lane dedication to create an ultimate primary access lane at the back of the property. The subdivision has been reviewed by the subdivision advisory committee and found technically feasible. The RS7 zone that's being proposed is consistent with the land use designation and the proposed subdivision and the lots would meet the RS7 zoning regulations as far as lot area and size. Staff's recommendation at this time is that council grant second, third, and fourth and final readings to bylaw 4647, 2016.
Okay. Are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. And that's the way it's supposed to go.
Item number two is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 to rezone the properties at 3541 Sheffield Avenue and 1369 Mitchell Street from A3 agricultural and resource to RS8 large village, single-family residential and RS9 large, single-family residential. This is bylaw number 4650.
Good evening, worship, members of council. Just for a little bit of context where the site is currently located, it's within the Partington Creek neighborhood plan area. As you see, it's designated with the hatch area labeled subject lines. It's located to the north of where the Partington Village Center is proposed to go and northeast to the elementary school site, to the northwest of Fremont Park, southwest of Pinecone Burke Park, and would be located north of David Avenue. The zoning on the property is currently A3 agricultural resource. Zoning in the immediate area to the west is RS8, a large village, single-family, and RS9, large, single-family, as well to the west is the future elementary school, which is zone P1. Land use designation on the property is compact, low-density residential. And the applicant's proposal is to rezone the site RS8 and RS9 to facilitate a 108-lot subdivision on that property. The proposed zoning is consistent with the OCP land use designation as well as the proposed lots would meet the zoning regulations for RS8 and RS9 in terms of size and area. The subdivision has been reviewed by the subdivision advisory committee and has been found technically feasible. Staff recommend that council grant second, third, and fourth and final reading to bylaw 4650, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Neill.
Yes, thank you very much. I was for the staff here. I was wondering, was this the subdivision where those two cul-de-sacs didn't have names the first time we saw this and now they have names? Trussell Court and Archworth Avenue?
I bet you it's the case that they didn't have names at one point and now they do, but...
I think the first time we saw it, they didn't have names and now there's names there.
It was before us before without names on them. Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's the case. Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, worship. These streets have not been named yet as the rezoning is still pending council's approval as well as the subdivision would still need to be approved by the subdivision committee. Assuming that is done, the streets would go through a street naming policy and currently the city is undertaking a review of our street naming policy and plan on providing an update to council in the coming months, or we will be updating the list of pioneer names and revising our policy to bring forward for council's consideration.
Okay, so I'll just ask this another way. At first reading, were there names attached to these two cul-de-sacs?
No, there were not.
There were not names?
That is correct.
And now there are names, okay. And secondly...
Now, to be clear, Mr. McIntyre, I think, wants to clarify that point.
No, it's not that one.
Yes, your worship. Maybe, Chris, if you can put up the subject property lot layout.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah.
The adjoining subdivision has the names...
I'm confused on this, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at the stuff that's already been rezoned. My bad. Okay.
Okay.
Well, it's not to do with this issue. I will withdraw the question and you can withdraw your answers too if you want.
So for clarification, the lots that are shown here are actually already built? Those lots are subdivided and ready for building?
Right. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
That's where the somewhat significant retaining walls are.
Right. Oh, brother.
Okay. Nobody else? Okay, there's one. Councillor Zarillo.
Well, I wanted to hear from people, but I don't want to lose the chance to speak, so...
You won't. But you can go ahead and speak now.
I'd rather hear from people first, but I just don't want it to close before I get my questions answered. So can I see who's going to speak first and hear from the audience first?
As you wish.
Thank you.
I've got councillor Hodge.
Welcome back. If we could go back to the first slide, the contact slide showing more of the mountain here. Yeah, so I'm just wondering, now that I can see where these are in relationship to the Village Center, one of the things that's sort of been often talked about is that the Village Center may become a hub for people, you know, someday visiting the new Pinecone Burke Provincial Park. It might be mountain biking, there might be other things. And I'm just wondering, the connectivity between the provincial park at the top and the Village Center, this piece of property falls right between them. And I'm just wondering if there's been any thought to connectivity to the Village Center, to the lands above it, either in terms of a mountain biking trail or just any kind of connections and what we've looked at that? If that's been considered at this time?
Mr. McIntyre.
Your worship, I believe Chris has got a map, a trail map showing that, but just very briefly, and Chris can speak to that at length, but it'll show the trail system planned in this area. And in addition to that would be the road network as well that'll go up through these subdivisions and get closer to the Pinecone Burke Provincial Park. And in that area there, this is where we'd be working very closely with Park Trek and Culture in terms of potential trailheads into that park asset. So perhaps my colleague in PRC may want to speak to that. It's something we're certainly looking at through the northwest Burke vision, but in this case here, we'd be relying on the planned road network in this area.
Okay. My only concern from what I've heard from, and we don't know that this is going to be a mountain biking mecca. A lot of us talk about that. It's very possible it could be, but my understanding is that the people in the mountain biking community do not like to ride on roads and with all the trails and with all the sort of the north-south connections between, with creeks and things, that I would hate to think that we're going to rely on regular subdivision roads to connect the provincial park to the Village Center. And I'm not saying it has to be here, but I'm just thinking we're starting to see the land above the site, above the Village Center, starting to develop. And then the next block is going to go and before you know it, we've cut off the Village Center from the mountain with only just regular residential streets. So I just want to make sure that we're giving some thought to connection. I see some dotted lines coming up here and one right below this property. It seems to stop right at David and I don't see any vision for how that connects.
Mr. Ravel.
Yes, thank you, your worship. We do have both the neighborhood plan that did look at this and it's been presented here today. There's also the master trail plan. There are plans for some more intricate kind of access to Pinecone Burke Provincial Park through some trailheads closer to the top. The number of trails, mountain bike trails, there's a limited network. Their accessibility is a combination of roads, various levels of roads, as well as some trails, but a lot of the trails are adjacent to spias and not entirely appropriate for mountain bike level of activity. It's largely pedestrian or smaller level of activity, but it's certainly not prevented. It really does depend. But the network you see here is largely what we're building to. There's some more detail provided as part of the Partington Creek neighborhood plan work that's being developed. But we are very conscious that the trail, master trail plan does talk about some access to the top and number of locations, how to connect to the park and some important trailheads, potential parking, and having access. And some of that is necessarily along roads and road corridors. It's just part of the reality. Our number of trails is limited to largely those next to riparian areas. There's very few dedicated trails that are specific for mountain biking alone for that purpose. They are largely along riparian areas and many of them are not, we wouldn't direct mountain bikers, serious mountain bikers. We have other facilities for mountain biking in the northeast that we're planning. As we recall, Lee Park is going to have some facilities and there's also the thought of additional facilities for learn-to activities in that activity level. So that's kind of the plan we have and it will be further developed as properties further to the east and north are developed where we can actually connect to the park.
And I'm not suggesting that it needs to go through here, just that I see, when I look at this and I see what looks like pieces of a jigsaw puzzle being sort of interlocked and moving across the mountain, and I see them moving across the mountain between the Village Center and the provincial park. And I see a couple of dotted lines following up beside the spia. So I just want to draw attention to the fact that I think that when we see an opportunity and if it's against a spia and we can make it 20 feet wider, that obviously makes more sense than going down through the middle of an urban subdivision. But I just, now that I see this piece and I'm starting to see the pieces fill in as we move into Partington, I just want us to be conscious that we should be looking at north-south interconnectivity. I do have one other question on this and that one pertains to the school site that's right, I guess, that sort of wraps around the school site here. We can go to the, maybe back again to the, right here. Going up there, the school site looks like it has been cleared and it also looks like it's probably being used as a retention area. And I'm just wondering, how does that fit into the work that's being done? Is that sort of open area going to be left as this site develops? Is this going to be a sort of a water retention area for both properties? I'm just sort of wondering how the use of that particular property fits into the development plans as they proceed here.
Mr. Jarvie.
Your worship, the school site was actually part of the adjoining development and I noticed the agent for the applicant is here tonight, so maybe to get to the speaker's portion, they may want to be able to talk to that. But my understanding would be that as a school site is not actively being planned right now for construction and it's at the low end of that adjoining subdivision, it may provide a suitable, appropriate location for a silt and sediment control pond. So that's a method whereby, because there is clearing taking place up there, again on the adjoining lands, in our wet and rainy weather, this runoff that comes down and it's a way of controlling that in a safe, environmentally safe basis so it doesn't flow into the adjoining creek. So a portion of that site's likely being used for that. It's been a while since I've been up there. I can't speak to personal knowledge, but I believe that's what's happening and perhaps the, as I said, the applicant's agent can speak to that during their comments shortly.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait for that. I just, as I said, I happened to be up there in the weekend and I noticed all the plastic and everything and it's obviously following all the procedures and protocol for that use. And so it was actually, it looked like it was very well done, but I was just sort of curious as to, you know, how long it was going to be there and how that sort of worked with these lands. So perhaps we can get that. I have a couple of other questions, but they can wait till later because I'm sure there's others to be asked.
Okay. That's it for council right now. We'll probably come back to them afterwards. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final? Sure.
People who have come up into that area, quite frankly, are... Oops, sorry. So, good evening, city council staff, applicants, I forgot my manners, fellow citizens. My name is Janet Klopp and I've resided at 3440 Highland Drive on Burke Mountain nearly 23 years now. And quite frankly, what I've heard from people who have gone up into that area to see that site and the one above it is that they're a bit shocked by the extensiveness of the wall system up there. I came here a few, well, about half a year ago, I guess. The developer was asking for a variance for wider street frontages and longer driveways for these properties, but it didn't ever seem to be divulged how these properties were going to be made into flat lots. And so I've sort of said something before to city staff that the visual aids put forth in these chambers would have us all believe that this land under consideration before us is flat and it's offered before council the same as any single-house lots and smaller building footprints in other parts of the city would be presented. I've suggested to city staff on a few occasions now that their frames showing proposed uses for properties that come to public hearing are sadly lacking and should contain a document which includes lines of topography to indicate slope or how steep the land is and the direction in which that occurs. We're all kind of talking around about, well, this is here and this is that and it happens every time, it seems. In fact, this property of topic is several hectares in size, hectare being two and one-half acres, a term most commonly used here in B.C. when describing the magnitude of an engulfed area of forest fire. It has a steep slope and in some places more than 16% because it is on a mountainside. Preparation for drainage would have to be extensive and I believe that is in place because there's been the big drain pipes down to Deboville Slough. As the rain gauge at Harper Road Water Pump Station just east of this site recorded over 600 millimeters of rain in a four-week period late last fall. That was the last week of November and the first three weeks of December. That's like five inches of rain over that whole hillside. So the last time a piece of property in this vicinity adjacent to this parcel in question tonight was brought before council, the amendments were being asked for the front yard setbacks and length of the driveways, but nothing was mentioned about walls. The streets and lots have since been prepared for future building. And I have a couple of pictures with me tonight to show what's in place for the ones that are there, but if you want me to stay just to this property, I can do that as I have some pictures of that as well. How can I set this up, please, so I can show them? Because some of these walls are over two stories in height and I'm sure it's, you know, probably engineered and feasible, but I'm hearing from a lot of people, it says walls somewhere there, just walls. Thank you. I'm hearing from a lot of people. You know, people go up there and say, what do you think about those walls? I'm not going around asking people about the walls. I'm not going to my neighbors or anybody else for that matter. This would be the extensiveness of the wall. This isn't just a little retaining wall. These are an extensive wall and one after the other. Okay, now this is the actual subject property. Do I have control over this? Thank you. Okay, so this is the actual property right now as it stands. And these walls, I don't remember them ever being mentioned. When I went up there, all of a sudden, they were there and I'm not certain, and a lot of people in the community aren't certain, that they have the trust of these walls. Let's put it that way. Citizens of Coquitlam and council at Southene completely surprised by their involvement and council members themselves said, yeah, we should go take a look. So upon expressing concern about these walls, I had heard from a city engineer at the open house at our new David Fire Hall last fall that while the walls in place would stand, future development would not allow them. Yet today, this is how the area is being prepared. That's actually above, that's not on the subject property, that's the piece above, but it's similarly happening. You can see how high those are. And then there's all kinds of material behind them and this is how the flat lots are being Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the purpose of a public hearing to inform citizens of the community of how a developer plans to proceed and put forward any concerns anyone might have about proposed changes to bylaws, zonings, and land uses? I'm not saying there's necessarily anything wrong with these. I just think that the community deserves to know something about their design and that they will be safe for all kinds of future eventualities. A lot of people don't feel that we're getting some basic, important information about these walls and about this site. And council can't be experts in all things, but they're certainly intelligent enough to understand general principles of slope, gravity, water flow, soil compaction, and how failures could impact citizens presently and in the future. So are these walls to be the norm for building at Partington Creek? It's a steep hillside. There's a lot at stake here, presently and in the future. And I would just like to know how these walls work. I mean, you know, there's things, things have happened in our engineering community throughout this province. Excuse my distrust, but I've made many suggestions and recommendations and pointed out this and that and a few things and to no avail and then suddenly, gosh, you know, the trees are falling on people's houses because I said they would. Not because I said they would, but I said they would. I've had erosion and sediment control issues, major ones, that I actually went to the Canadian federal fisheries officer for. I'll freely admit it. I feel very privileged to live in this province and in this community. And I'm sorry if it seems like I'm a little out of line with the team thinking, but I will speak up if I'm unsure of what is happening here. And I am unsure of what is happening here. So I'd really like some assurance that all is in order where these stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor... Oops, you're off. Okay. I'm going to look to staff to provide the, I mean, the reality is that these walls are engineered in the same way that the foundations of the buildings in most cases are engineered and we don't, council doesn't review the engineering of the foundations, which have potentially more impact than the retaining walls, but I do want someone in staff to assure us that the walls are engineered and that there's... Mr. Dzieski, please.
Thank you, your worship. I personally have many years of experience working in communities where steep hills are a challenge. This is not different from those. What I can tell you about the retaining walls on these kind of terrains is that it's a very elaborate work between geotechnical engineers and structural engineers to make sure that the walls they design will stand up and stand up over a long period of time. When you design these walls, you also have to look at how it will fit into the neighborhood, how it will permit formation of new lots, and how the servicing can be done efficiently. For the untrained eye, indeed, these structures look kind of scary at times depending on the height, depending on the slope angles, depending on the terrain, as well as the type of walls, what they are designing and then subsequently building. Our regulations, and my planning colleagues could speak more about it, certainly includes that you have to have an engineer on record who is responsible for all the design and subsequent construction work. And APEC basis requirements include a number of forms that have to be filled out and signed and sealed by qualified professional engineers. So in this respect, our concerns are absolutely minimized and we do have actually, I certainly have the trust in my fellow engineers that they can and they do design safe walls.
Great, then, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I did give you a little bit of latitude in that you were referring to another project, but I realize you... but I realize you were drawing parallels to it, so. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor Zerlo. No, Counselor Wilson first, then Counselor Zerlo.
Just maybe some clarifying information. We dealt with a townhouse proposal over a year ago, and great pains were taken to minimize the size of the retaining walls, and I think we had limits that we would allow for these retaining walls in this townhouse proposal. What's the difference between that and what we're looking at here? Are they two different categories, or?
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, thanks, your worship. There are different development types. I think what was pictured there is some nearby property, single-family subdivisions, and as would be the subject lands. So it's through the city's subdivision application process that that, you know, the topographical, the site grading aspects, along with a myriad of other considerations, you know, the road design, the lot layout, the servicing, all those things come into play. So it's through that process that, and it's an iterative process, too. It looks at the site topography, the surveys are done, and a proposed grading plan is submitted that works with the proposed roads, so of a certain grade and curvature, the lot layout. And so that goes through that review process. Now, sometimes in Middle East, we get further east and higher up Burke Mountain, the sites do get steeper, and because of that condition, there is the need for retaining walls, and that is undertaken at the subdivision stage by the overall subdivision developer. Rather than parse it up in the lots and just leave it to the eventual builders or homeowners to figure out how to have the retaining walls work, it's done on an overall comprehensive basis by the subdivision developer. So it goes through that process. As the General Manager Engineering Public Works mentioned, there are reviews by both engineering staff and development servicing staff in my department, and in the end, it's those designs are reviewed and approved and constructed as such and inspected. The thinking being is to have that there in place, all as a coordinated system, including drainage, which is a key thing, as Ms. Klop mentioned, in place, so when the lots are approved and then made ready for sale and construction, that aspect has been taken care of.
Thanks, and I realize the pictures were from the previous subdivision, is that correct? Yeah, but the new subdivision probably is going to have similar walls, is that safe So I guess my question is, why do we have sort of height limits for retaining walls for townhouse complexes, but we don't for single-family home subdivisions?
With the townhouse sites, there's an overall site grading and landscape plan, and the desire is to keep the retaining wall heights, I think it's no more than five feet, and then you step it back, you know, sort of in a step fashion, working with the site. Again, at this scale here, at the scale of a neighborhood, there are the needs for larger walls on occasion to take up those site grades. Now, in some cases, there likely will be backfilling against the base of the wall to, so it reduces the overall, the visual height of the structure. But in some instances, where you have a steep grade and lots backing onto each other, you'll need to have that sort of retaining wall to provide that grading separation.
And, you know, I apologize for not being able to figure out exactly where those walls are according to these plans, but is there a chance that somebody's backyard may be facing a twenty-foot wall in this plan?
I'm not sure about this particular subdivision here, and I think, again, the applicant's agent is here and ready to speak, so they might be able to comment to that. Typically not, there would be, a backfilling would take place, and so, you know, the overall visual height of the wall would be less.
Can I ask the proponent a question? What would be the maximum height that you figure these walls will end up being in relation to somebody's backyard, side yard, front yard?
Mr. Mayor of Council, thank you for the opportunity to be up here. I'm Evan Osteen with West Bill Holdings and Derek Reed. We're going to do a bit of a tag team. He's going to take the difficult questions, and I'll take these ones. If I may, I wouldn't mind addressing some of the first questions that came up, and then we can get to that with your leave. There was, in the big picture connection to the, to B.C. Park, to the village, all of our subdivisions have a great network of trails, primarily north-south, which we utilize the creeks for, and also at the end of cul-de-sacs, we, east-west connection. So it's a combination of very green trails plus the street network that works well. This subdivision itself doesn't connect directly to those two, but it is part of the whole network that we've been building over the last decade or so. So as we move further north, as we move further east, we'll be looking at that connection more. And certainly, the frontage along B.C. Park is going to be very important to us, and we'll be looking for the right location for trailheads, parking, so you don't get that nasty interface of mountain bikers and regular citizens and that sort of thing. The school pond is, has been a great asset for the construction of this. It's a site that works very well for a sediment detention pond. It's temporary, we're thinking about three years until construction's finished. The upside of this is the area that we've put the pond, when we're finished, we're going to be able to grade that out, and this will be the start for the playing field for the school, so it's actually an asset for the school district, and that was part of the agreement that we have with them. Use their land while they're not for this purpose, and then leave them a legacy behind. In terms of the walls, there's been a number of questions about that. We're very confident with the wall system that we have. Specifically about aesthetics, it's a great concern to us. We've got that split block face that we've been using for a number of years. Will some backyards have a twenty-foot wall to them? Yes, they will. But you'll see with the subdivisions that have been built, the way the land, the backyards have been built, it, as much as a twenty-foot wall can blend in, it blends in very well. It works quite well. There's a lot of benefits to it. It's a site that requires this type of grading. It's the steepest site that we've worked with so far and is probably the steepest site that we will be working with. It sort of gets back to normal steep after this. Further questions, Counselor Wilson?
I guess in the area where the greatest height in walls, was there any potential for sort of stepping it back and having it be, you know, eight feet, eight feet, eight feet, rather than twenty feet?
I think Derek can use about half an hour right now to tell you about all of the permutations we've done for these walls and the way to minimize and add landscaping.
Hey, while Ray has left you about twenty seconds, so go ahead.
Thank you. We're always looking at opportunity to enhance the retaining wall systems, to provide better aesthetics, and we continue to look at that for our next subdivision. But there are challenges through limitations of land, stepping back to the amount of tiers that you can provide.
Thank you. While you're, while you're, is there vegetation planned for, so I see in one case, for example, a low terrace and then a large wall, I would assume plantings go in there that help soften that wall, or?
No, there, through the retaining wall covenant, there isn't permitted to be any planting within the retaining wall tier, but the building department requires tree planting as part of the house builder requirements for the lot, so obviously, they would have trees and they would have landscape.
There you go, okay. Good there, thank you very much for that. Now, are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Counselor Zerlo again.
I had a whole bunch of questions, so I was hoping I'd get some more from the audience, but I'm just going to ask them. The first one is something that I sent to staff earlier about attachment number one, the aerial photography. And I was looking at the aerial photography, and then on the weekend when I went to the site, I was very surprised to see that the site doesn't look like this. So I asked for some additional pictures, and I wonder if staff has pictures of the current condition of the site for the public hearing. And I just, I'm asking for that because I think, as the speaker previously talked about, these are the only documents that go out to our community, and they should be fully inclusive and representative. So it'd be great if I could see some of those pictures of what this current condition looks like. But my point is, I, even in the report, it says that this is a fully treed, these lands, which are completely forested, and don't get me wrong, there's a lot of trees there still, but it's not necessarily completely forested and certainly not looking like attachment
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, thanks, your worship. Chris is just trying to dial up the photos we've got from today. It is correct, the aerial photo we typically include with our report packages, that's based on aerial photography that the city obtains, I think it's every two-year cycle, so in time, they will be a little bit dated. Staff did go out there today and couldn't take aerial photography course, but we've got some pictures from the nearby road ends, so I think Chris has got that spooled up now, and I'll let him speak to that.
Sorry about the technical difficulties there.
Mr. Jarvie.
Yeah, so as Counselor Zerlo referred to, obviously, the aerial photos are from 2014, and the rate of change up in northeast Coquitlam is quite rapid, and it's very difficult to stay up to date with some of those aerial photography. We have gone out and taken a look at the site, and we looked at, this perspective is at the end of David Avenue, if you're looking eastwards out towards the site. And this one here is looking out from the end of Sheffield. You can see down, again, we're looking eastward towards the end of Sheffield Avenue where the proposed property would be. And this is a portion of the internal road, excuse me, part of it that's been cleared and getting the site prepared for some grading works and that they'll be required to complete. One last site, picture from the end of Shea Street, and again, it's showing a site looking further, looking eastwards towards the property.
So I really appreciate that, because I actually went back today, just before committee, to take a look at these, and if you can go back to pictures, I think, it helps me with my next question about the trucks here. So when I was there, just before two o'clock today, the truck, the Sheffield is extended, the road where you can see the digger there, the trucks were going that way, like they were going down Mitchell, and then one of them was turning with soil right where this truck is, making a right down into what looked like the city lands past the school. So I'm just wondering where, it looks like there's fill there, what's happening to the right? Why is fill going down to the right? And then I also wanted to ask the question about how far has the road already been cleared,
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you. I have another image here, Minish, if you want to switch over, we'll, it'll demonstrate it a little better. I've got clicks here. Technology makes it so much simpler. As you see here, this is showing the proposed subdivision layout, and to the south of the property where it says city lands, there's currently a temporary statutory right-of-way that's providing some access down there at the bottom of Mitchell Street. I'm not sure if that's exactly the road that you were referring to, but there is some construction road access that's in there right now.
Okay, that might be. And do I remember this coming about six months ago or something, the request for these access roads, or is that something totally different?
Mr. McIntyre, or Mr. Snish? Mr. McIntyre.
No, that's a good question. It's going back a number of months, and there was permission requested to cut in some of these access roads going up the hill from here. Again, maybe the representatives from West Bill can speak more knowledge than that than I can, but there were some construction haul roads that were being run through there, so to avoid bringing large and essentially dirty equipment onto paved public roads, excuse me, through newly established neighborhoods, there was this parallel network of rough gravel roads that were being used for those hauling purposes.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, because we're in a public hearing right now where we're being told that this is fully treed land and that we, as a council sitting around this table, make the decision whether this land becomes a subdivision and gets cleared or not. So I'm trying to understand at which point can council has control and at which point those decisions have already been made, where the roads are already cut in. I asked the question today about permitting, if there was permitting, and I didn't hear back, so maybe I can leave, that could be my next question. Is there, are there any permits out for land clearing on the portion of the subdivisions that we're looking at today? Not the ones to the left with Shea and Straline Hill, but the ones we're looking at today. Are there any permits out for land clearing?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, your worship. Through to Counselor Zerlo, we haven't received any conservation permits, applications at this time for site grading or soil removal. There has been some permits issued for tree cutting, as far as I'm aware, but we haven't received anything to go out and clear and start grading the site completely.
So how does the, let's say, the extension of Sheffield play into that then? Because we already know we've got some extension on Sheffield. I don't know how far it goes. I know it goes a ways because I was taking pictures of a truck going that way, so how far is it going? What, how does that play?
The chair, again, maybe the applicant's agent could speak to this, but this is private property. They often will put in these rough haul roads, as I mentioned a moment ago, for that purpose, but also, too, to gain a better sense of the property, they can do the site surveys from these access points. It gives a better understanding of how the land can ultimately be serviced if approved by council for rezoning.
So if council doesn't approve for rezoning, then this has already been etched in? Like, how does that play out? They have to fill it back up again, or? I'm just trying, I know this may sound silly, but I'm just trying to understand. Cart before the horse here, chicken before the egg, like, how does this all play out? If council really has control at this table, then what if council said no? Or is it already in the OCP? These roads have already been predetermined and that's it?
The general road network is typically identified in the, yes, in the official community plan and the neighborhood plan. Specifically answer the question, if the rezoning is declined by council, that kind of puts a halt on the whole process. The subdivision application does not proceed because you don't have the zoning necessary to support that. In the other approvals that would be required, conservation permits, tree removal, they would, that would be put in advance as well, because zoning is really kind of the key that unlocks the process.
Okay, so let's go back to the zoning then. So this is A3, agricultural resource. Well, I can't see agricultural opportunities too much here, but what does, what would be the resource uses of this land if it stayed A3? Like, what would be the use of this land if it stayed A3?
Your worship, the A3, our agricultural resource zone, it's a large rural zoning, it's a bit of a holding zone. it's a bit of a holding zone in areas that have neighborhood plans approved. In there, you can have single-family residential, be agricultural and some resource activities. But it's essentially, it's a rural residential with some resource businesses possible.
So is forestry considered resource or is it about mining or soil removal? Like, what's the resource definition?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, Your Worship. The definition of resource means a use providing for the conservation, management and extraction of primary forest, mineral or other resource materials. Includes preliminary grading, cutting or crushing of those materials for shipment and the accessory storage of motor vehicles and equipment. So it would be any combination of that definition. So it could be extracting trees and having a resource where you had a tree farm, removing those trees. It could be mineral extraction, gravel extraction, things like that.
So the landowner could, could take all the trees and just sell them and never put anything on there? Like, that would be considered resource if they were foresting that area, just without doing subdivision after that? Like, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, okay, so let's say, we're saying it's A3 resource, we're saying that it can be forest, it can be for forestry, right? So that we can do logging there. So then do they need city permits to do logging or because it's an A3, they can go ahead and do logging because it falls under the resource zone? Like, I'm trying to understand what's the use of this land if it's not a subdivision?
It gets into an area of business operation, it would require a business license for that. We don't have many active logging operations going on in northeast Coquitlam. There may be tree permits, I'll have to check into the details of our tree bylaw about that. But typically, these properties are, they sit there as holding properties under that zoning, there may be a rural residential use, but beyond that, there's not much in the way of resource extraction activity.
I guess that's what, that's what I'm struggling with on this, is that I mean, being asked to say, is this the best use of this land? Is this zoning, is this new zoning better than the old zoning? But the old zoning, I'm being told it's just a holding zoning for making it a subdivision. So I have an issue with that because I don't understand. Then what's the point of having A3 if it's just a holding? Shouldn't it, shouldn't it have a purpose? A3 should have a purpose. So I'm just thinking aloud right now, but it seems odd to me that I'm being asked, is this the best use for the land when I don't know exactly what are all the uses on the A3 side?
The land, perhaps we could start, when did the land become A3? I know in the OCP, it's compact residential. The official community plan shows this as residential, but the zoning, I guess, is held over from a previous time when it, there was no residential zoning up there or it was only resource. Is that the case, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, essentially, that's it. Maybe the term a holding zone is not the most accurate, but it's been A3 zoning, I'd imagine, for decades and decades. It's now with the, well, first with the northeast Coquitlam area plan being prepared all over 10, 15 years ago and subsequent to that would be the neighborhood plan. So it's gone through a planning process which lays out road networks, community needs, land use types and densities. And so while the A3 zoning is still there reflecting, you know, a zoning from decades ago, neighborhood plan has a vision for the area and the proposed rezoning is consistent with that neighborhood plan vision.
So again, I come back to, so if we already have a neighborhood plan that's already decided that this is going to be this, then, you know, it seems, it seems like this process that we're at tonight is just a rubber stamp on something that's already been decided. But I'll move on.
Well, and in fairness, it was decided when we adopted the neighborhood plan a number of, a couple of, a year or so ago and when we established the OCP several years ago. So those, there is a planning, I guess, a stream of planning decisions that all have to be consistent and this is a consistent decision with the previous decisions that councils long before I was here have made.
So the other thing I wanted to ask about was the sediment control in the, in the subdivision that was 3500 block of Sheffield, which is the one to the west. In the report, there was talk about the erosion and sediment control plan and I don't see it in this report. So what is the erosion and sediment control plan for this subdivision?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, Your Worship. I see that Mr. Reed is at the podium and he'd be probably quite qualified to answer that question.
I didn't ask him though, I asked you. Hey, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Yes, Westville has designed erosion sediment control plan that has been submitted to the City of Coquitlam for approval. That includes clearing of roads and sediment pond is the first phase, proceeding on with the clearing of the lots and with the constraints of the bird window, which starts, or the bird nesting period, which starts on March 1st. Westville sought permission to get the roads and the sediment pond in place so that it could proceed with the balance of the clearing in a professional manner. There is a sediment pond on the east side of Mitchell Street that services this portion of the site and only this portion of the site.
Is that the one where the, is that the school site?
No, the school site has a separate sediment pond, that's for the previous 137 lot subdivision.
So through the, through the Chair, I'm just wondering why this information is not in the public hearing brief tonight to staff?
Very specifically which?
The erosion and sediment control plan and the information about trying to get cleared before the nesting season. I'm just wondering why that's not in the report because it was in the report of 3500 Sheffield. We did have very small information about it, but information about erosion and sediment.
Okay. Of course, tonight's about zoning, the appropriate land use, but Mr. McIntyre.
Certainly, Your Worship, if that's council's wish and traction, we can make sure that's covered off in future reports. Again, the planning's in place for that, but the key step is the rezoning and, you know, the site clearing doesn't happen until the zoning's done. The subdivision servicing does not proceed site grading, so it's contingent on the zoning being considered by council. If in the future there's an interest in, you know, hearing that that sequence, we can, we can pay more attention to that in the reports as well these items come up at first reading consideration. If there's questions at that time, we're usually pretty good about addressing that and can back with information.
I'm going to stop talking, but I'm just, I don't feel that I have the information, enough information to make a decision on zoning. I just, I'm missing information like that and I don't want to take everybody's time.
Okay, we'll do the call again, or are there any other speakers to this item?
My name's Alden Murphy, I'm representing my mother from 3400 Highland Drive. I just have a question, thinking about the wall, go backwards a little bit. The wall, whose liability is that going to be 20 years down the road if it happens to fail?
I can put the question to staff if you like.
Wherever the answer comes from, it's, to me, it's interesting.
Yeah, okay. If a component that's constructed on the site, the wall or any other component fails, whose liability is it? Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, Your Worship, I'll try to provide some comments to that, but again, the General Manager of Engineering may want to speak because it really gets down to the engineers. As mentioned with the walls, they are designed by engineers, reviewed by engineers and ultimately it's signed off and sealed by an engineering professional. And with that carries the responsibility and liability for the safe functioning of that feature over time.
My guess would be when the city engineer signs off on it 20 years down the road.
No, the city engineer doesn't sign off on it.
Never signs off on?
It's a private engineer that has to certify this. This is on behalf of the developer. The city engineer probably looks at that to make sure the stamp is on the document and that sort of thing, but the city engineer doesn't design the system or certify.
Oh, no, I understand they don't design it, but I'm assuming that the city is going to end up with the liability for it.
Okay, then go ahead and assume that, but.
No, no.
Ask the question and Mr. McIntyre answers. The city doesn't bear a liability for accepting the certification of a qualified professional under the building code. On the building code, if you, if a city accepts the certification of a qualified building professional, engineer and architect, then the liability is entirely on the insured professional and the city doesn't grab that liability because they accept the certification.
I'm just, I'm trying to remember any of the last failures, like the last dam that failed. It seems like the province picks up the bulk of the cost. In this case, I'd be interested if the city didn't have to pick up the bulk of the cost. But anyways, okay, thank you.
Oh, missed it, Councilor Zerlo.
Yeah, I had the same question. I actually was asking that question earlier today about the liability, so I don't think the question was answered. The question is, who holds the liability? And the answer that I got earlier today was the property owners, that the property owners have the liability for maintenance and I'm concerned that that could end up being legal issues later if certain property owners aren't going to take responsibility for those. So I'd like a real answer, please, of who has the liability to maintain and fix the walls if there's problems? And I'd also like to know if it's the landowner, if they have that on the title of their homes that they're responsible for maintenance and upkeep of these walls. I'd like a real answer, please.
Councilor Zerlo, we're asking staff for an answer. I trust that it will be a real answer, so, Mr. Diozengi.
Thank you, Your Worship. I try to be as real as I can. When it comes to designing retaining walls of this magnitude, you have to be a professional engineer and as such, you must carry liability insurance, either on your own or the consulting engineering firm that employs you to carry out the design. That professional liability insurance is even beyond the engineer's lifespan, so if there is a liability issue in some instances, even the engineer's estate can be at risk. Now, so that's for the design and the construction and the liability insurance covers it for, in instances, for several decades. The real question is, I think, not necessarily, not only the liability, but also who is responsible for the maintenance and the owner? Who is the owner of the wall and who is responsible for the maintenance of that wall? Because obviously, if the maintenance is neglected, then that can lead to problems. Now, there are typically three scenarios. One is that the retaining wall would be built on private property and then the property owner will be responsible for the maintenance of that wall as long as that wall is there. Other option is that the wall is built on property that is or will become public property, namely, in this case, the City of Coquitlam, and then the City of Coquitlam would have responsibility for the maintenance of the wall and ultimate replacement of the wall. The third scenario is, it's kind of a mixture of the two where the wall could be placed on public property, but there could be statutory agreement where a third party, most of the cases, the adjacent property owner would be responsible for the maintenance of the wall. Failing all that and should there be some damage to the wall, either because of a design flaw or a construction problem or because of the neglected maintenance and somebody will have to repair or replace the wall, then the insurance issues come to play. And then again, depending on who is responsible, who is liable, it could be the city, it could be the private property owner, it could be the designer, or even it could be the contractor who sometime ago constructed that wall. So that's the best I can offer you this time.
And can you assure us though, that the city has taken the appropriate steps to ensure that there is insurance in place and there's certifications and stamps on all the drawings and all the as-built?
Absolutely, yes.
Just, I'm going to ask later, after the public hearing is closed, how many of these walls are needed for the new subdivision? I mean, I could ask it now, I just did, but that's one of my questions on here, is that how many, how many of these walls are needed over six feet tall for the subdivision?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, Your Worship. At this time, it's not clear, the exact number of walls, the locations or the ultimate height. Should council grant second, third and fourth readings and we move on further, we'll be looking at a preliminary approval for the subdivision and through that process, we'd be requiring full civil drawings from the applicant with their engineers, providing the layouts, the location, the height, the materials, all those specific details. And through that process, we would work with the applicant as well as their engineers to try and limit the height of the walls and any potential impacts and to ensure that they're in optimal locations and that they're safe for the purpose that they're being built for.
So through the Chair, can I just get confirmation of what I just heard then? So if this goes to, let's say, third reading, that it won't get fourth reading until we've seen what the layout would look like and how the walls would be, where the walls would be constructed? Is that what I heard?
There's a zoning that doesn't require a development permit, so we're giving it all, we're being asked to give it all three readings, the second, third and fourth tonight.
So if we do the zoning, because we are focused on the zoning today, although ignoring what's coming after wouldn't, wouldn't be prudent in my opinion. If we're just looking at zoning, are you saying that it's going to come back for a development permit and that's when we'll see the walls if it's given zoning?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, Your Worship. The subdivision would be handled through staff and the city's approving officer and the city's manager would sign off on any servicing drawings submitted by the applicant that has their geotech and their structural engineers' seals of assurance on those projects. But the staff's recommendation at this time is to get fourth and final reading and the subdivision will be handled through the staff process.
So that's interesting to me because if we approve this zoning today, then it's totally gone out of this council's hands of how this develops out. So thank you.
And keeping in mind that council doesn't do subdivision plans, typically we don't do site servicing plans, we don't, those things are determined by the professionals in the engineering department or the planning department.
Totally understand, but we haven't seen how 3500 Sheffield has played out yet. Thank you.
Okay. Do it again, are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Saying none, I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item 3, an application to Manse Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 to rezone the property at 3390 Highland Drive from RS2 one family suburban residential to RS7 small village, single-family residential and RS8 large village, single-family residential. This is bylaw number 4651.
Good evening once again, Your Worship members of council. Item 3, 3390 Highland Drive. The property is currently located on the south side of Highland Drive, north of Derbyshire and west of Duchess Street. Zoning on the property is currently RS2 suburban residential. The zoning immediately to the east is RS8 as well as RS7 to the west. Land use designation on the property is small village, single-family as well as large village, The proposal is to rezone the property to RS7 small village, single-family as well as RS8 large village, single-family. The RS8 portion would be the northern and RS7 would be the southern portion. As part of that, there'd be widening of Derbyshire Avenue as well as Highland Drive. The proposal's for eight lots. The proposed zoning is consistent with the OCP land use designation. It should be noted that the two westernmost lots, the applicant has proposed a variance on those lots to reduce the width from 12 meters to 11.11. on those lots to reduce the width from 12 meters to 11.6 meters. Staff's recommendation is that council grant second, third, and fourth and final reading to this bylaw.
Okay. Our first speaker tonight is Alden Murphy, representing Salma Murphy, 3,400 Highland Drive.
Hello again. Yeah, my concerns have actually already been addressed. There was a mistake on the original application, and I brought it to the attention of staff, and they corrected it, and I don't have anything else ready to add to that.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Councilor Zerillo.
Yeah, this is interesting, because we just had the neighboring property last week that was also looking for a variance. So these, all of these will be eligible for a suite, I assume, all of these RS7, RS8?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, the RS7 zone, as well as the RS8 zone, does allow for secondary suites.
So I'd like to ask if there is a possibility that these ones that we've allowed a variance, if it goes through tonight, that there could be some limitation on the secondary suite? Just because I see that the parking becomes an issue, the third parking space is not as easy on these smaller lots. Is that possible, to have some restrictions on secondary street for the suites for the ones where the lot size is not adequate, or doesn't meet the bylaw?
Mr. Jarvie.
Thank you, your worship. Attachment 4 to the first reading report does show a layout where the applicant has shown a parking configuration for the front loaded lots there, that would have a third unencumbered parking spot, that would be for the secondary suite.
So, I'm sorry to have to say this, but we have one exit out onto the street and three cars. So I'm not a physicist, I'm not saying I am, but I'm sorry to say, I just don't believe that this is convenient or easily accessible, to have one exit out onto the street with three cars, the way they're configured. So that's all I'm going to say. There's enough problems up there already, and we don't need to be adding more. Thank you.
Not sure what information is missing. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Saying none, I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item 4, is an application to Man City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000 to rezone the property at 905 Sheriff's Street from RS1 One Family Residential to RS3 One Family Residential and P5 Special Park. This is bylaw number 4649.
Thank you. Yes, the property is currently located at the southeast corner of Wyvern Avenue and Sheriff's Street there. The zoning on the property is currently RS1. Properties around there, to the south, there's an RT1 Two Family Residential property, as well as to the north, there's P5 Special Park. The OCP land use designation on the site is for One Family Residential and natural area. The proposal is for a four lot subdivision, that would create four residential lots, and the fifth lot would be the park component that would be dedicated to the city to protect the ravine area there along Schoolhouse Creek. Staff recommend that council grant second, third, and fourth reading to bylaw 4649, 2016.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Saying none, I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item 5, is an application to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement and heritage designation bylaw for the property at 1207 Carche Avenue. These are bylaws number 4596 and 4657.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. The property is currently designated, currently cited at the northwest corner of Carche Avenue in Laval Square. It's right in the heart of Mayardville, right at the Laval Square there. It's immediately adjacent to Earl Lady of Lords Church to the east, Foy Millard to the south, as well as some RM1 Low Density Apartment Residential to the north and the west. Current zoning on the property is RS1 One Family Residential, as well as the OCP land use designation is Low Density Apartment Residential in the Mayardville Neighborhood Plan. The proposal through the heritage revitalization agreement is to relocate the Bethel House on site. The building would come closer to Carche Avenue, be squared out to face Carche, and a little closer to the southeast corner. One common driveway would be provided from Laval Square. That common driveway would provide access to all three new houses that are proposed on there, as well as all seven of the parking spaces. Another component of the application is to restore the Bethel House back to its original appearance, as well as the three new additional homes would have sympathetic heritage design characteristic to it as well. At this time, staff recommend that council grant second and third reading to bylaw 4596 and 4657, 2016.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Counselor Reed. Mr. Jarvie.
Sorry, Counselor Reed, was that the proposals for one parking space?
Just the Heritage House.
Yeah, correct. The three new additional homes would have two spaces, and the Heritage Home has one space proposed. There are no suites in any of the homes.
Okay. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item 6, is an application to Man City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000 to rezone the property 1155 Charland Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4648.
For the last time. I'm a little tired. I need a chair up here rather than over there.
Well, it's so nice to have you up here.
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate that. Item 6 is for 1155 Charland Avenue. The property is currently on the north side of Charland Avenue. It's east of Marmont Street, northwest of Como Creek, and just south of Austin Avenue, where the commercial is there. Current zoning on the property is RS1 One Family Residential. Zoning in the area is a bit of a mix with RS1 to the south and east. There is another RT1 zone property just to the west. To the north is C2 General Commercial, CS1 Service Commercial, as well as another RT1 site just in northeast. The land use designation on the property is Neighbor Tatch Residential. And through that land use designation, the applicant is proposing to rezone the site to RT1. With that proposal, it would include two new lots being created, as well as providing a little bit of lane dedication to help achieve the ultimate primary access lane standard there. The proposed zone, as well as the proposed lots with their area and size, meet the RT1 zoning requirements. And staff's recommendation is that council grant second, third, and fourth and final reading to the bylaw 4648. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvie. We've got the applicant here, available to answer questions. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? I'll declare this item closed, and I'll thank Mr. Jarvie for such an excellent job.
Thank you, your worship. That is the last item on this public hearing agenda.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We will reconvene in about seven minutes with the council meeting to consider these items, as well as the council agenda.